I'm sure you're gonna answer this here in a minute, but how is this gonna affect the phases that we already have in process with Cloudwise?
Yeah, so we've already, we've already discussed this internally, Mr. Chelton and I did. We're gonna look heavily at Phase Two still. I mean, that's still not taken off the board, but that will definitely, if they do not receive this particular Great Grant, that will affect Phase Two heavily. So we're gonna have to step back and realign what we're doing there on Phase Two in the western part of, or southern part of the county. So that's definitely an issue that we'll have to think through. Because there's still some potential legal ramifications out there, there could be some delays or issues. But because the State Broadband Office has directed us to move forward with Bright Speed, there's, there's no reason for us to hold up. We, and they have a great plan, they're gonna service a lot of our residents, there's no problem there. It's just with anything, it gets complicated sometimes, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What areas will they be serving?
He'll answer that question, Mr. Brewer will answer that question in just a minute. He's got a map and laid out of what they're doing and how they're gonna service those areas, so he'll give you some clarity on that.
Well, hope it's better than what I've said.
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Okay.
I'm very familiar with Bright Speed.
Okay, well.
That's all I can tell you.
Yeah, I know, I understand. And there's been some unique transitions over the last year between Lumen, Cloudwise, or not Cloudwise, gosh, CenturyLink, all these names are starting to run together. Lumen, CenturyLink, and Bright Speed, and Mr. Brewer is gonna fill you on some of the details on how that happened and where they're at today. And then also along with the Great Grant stuff, so to give you some more confidence in the selection of the Bright Speed, hopefully. All right, with that, Mr. Brewer is with Bright Speed, he's joined us this morning, and he's got a slideshow that he'll walk us through all the information that he has for us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, I am Steve Brewer, I'm Director of Governmental Affairs for Bright Speed in the state of North Carolina and a handful of other states. But North Carolina by far is our largest state. So the slide before you today shows you a bit of the transition over to Bright Speed. Previously, the assets in this area were part of the Lumen Corporation and marketed as CenturyLink. And roughly summer of 2021, Apollo Global Management and Lumen announced a sale of assets in 20 states to include the state of North Carolina. And the value of that transition, or that transaction was seven and a half billion dollars. And then Apollo Global Management, very, very large private investment firm, if you're not familiar with them, also committed an additional $2 billion to bring as many fiber passings as possible across that 20-state region that which they were acquiring. In March of 2022, Apollo Global Management announced that the state of North Carolina would be home to the corporate headquarters, it's in Charlotte, North Carolina. And that the assets would, that were part of this transaction would actually be branded as Bright Speed, branded and marketed as Bright Speed. On October 3rd of 2022, Bright Speed actually got the keys to the car, if you will. The transaction between Lumen and Apollo Global Management closed on October 3rd of 2022. And at that point forward, the assets were owned by a completely different company, completely different executive leadership team. And ultimately owned by Apollo Global Management, but again marketed as Bright Speed. Since that time, to give you an indication of the changes, as of the end of April, Bright Speed has announced that in the state of North Carolina, it intends to build 800,000 fiber passings. In totality, across the 20 states that it acquired, the goal is 3 million. So you can see, North Carolina is really getting the lion's share of the funding to build as many fiber passings as possible. And that's using that $2 billion that I mentioned earlier that Apollo Global Management had committed to the process. Anything that we're able to achieve by way of broadband grants will only serve to grow that number. I'm very hopeful that we get close to 900,000 to a million locations in the state of North Carolina with fiber. And again, this is going to be symmetrical fiber. Initially, we will start out offering speeds of one gigabyte by one gigabyte, meaning the same speed coming into your home is going out of your home. And then ultimately, we think we'll get to two gig fairly quickly. And ultimately, we're told by our vendor, who is Corning, based here in North Carolina, that, that the fiber will be scalable to 10 gigs. So we're really building a future-proof network with this. But at any rate, and we immediately hired 200 additional call center agents as, when, when Bright Speed got the keys to the car, I like to say. And then in the state of North Carolina, we've also hired 51 additional technicians. Not all of them are up and running yet, some are still going through training. But as a result of that, we've seen a dramatic improvement in our service metrics. And you'll see on this slide that it notes that we're answering calls now on average in less than one minute. So since we have hired the additional service technicians, our mean time to repair numbers in North Carolina have improved 32%. And the mean time to install has improved by 20%. And again, we expect that number to continue to improve as we bring more of the technicians that are going through training online. So again, Bright Speed is looking to install as much fiber as possible across, across our service area. And some of the, the real advantages of fiber is, quite frankly, fiber's not stolen. We've had a large number of copper theft incidents over the past seven to eight months since, since the close of the transaction. And obviously, when fiber, excuse me, when copper is ripped out of the ground, it, it takes that section of the network down. So we've experienced a lot of impact there. Fiber is less impacted by weather. Some of the, the older, more traditional copper network, if it gets wet, they're certainly going to see some service degradations associated with that. And you just simply don't have that with fiber. But most importantly here, the process that we are going through with this deployment is, it's a, it's a fairly new process here in North America in how the service is deployed. It's more of a plug and play, if you will, than as much fiber splicing that has traditionally been done. Certainly, there's, there will be some fiber splicing involved, and fiber splicing is very time-consuming and tedious. But there's more of a plug and play feature associated with this, particularly as you get involved in the last mile of the fiber deployment. Good news about that, it enables us to deploy the network quicker than we would have otherwise been able to do so. And then if the network were, if those assets were to become damaged, it enables us to replace them far quicker than we would have been able to do in the past. And to give you some idea of the simplicity of it, I've actually done it. And I'm the governmental affairs guy, so that, that goes a long way to show you how much simpler things have gotten with the improved technology. And on the horizon, we do have a couple of different broadband grant opportunities, and we'd be delighted to work with the county on that. more confidence in the selection of the Brightspeed, hopefully. All right, with that, Mr. Brewer is with Brightspeed. He's joined us this morning and he's got a slideshow that he'll walk us through all the information that he has for us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, I am Steve Brewer. I'm Director of Governmental Affairs for Brightspeed in the state of North Carolina and a handful of other states, but North Carolina by far is our largest state. So the slide before you today shows you a bit of the transition over to Brightspeed. Previously, the assets in this area were part of the Lumen Corporation and marketed as CenturyLink. And roughly summer of 2021, Apollo Global Management and Lumen announced a sale of assets in 20 states to include the state of North Carolina. And the value of that transition, or that transaction was $7.5 billion. And then Apollo Global Management, very, very large private investment firm, if you're not familiar with them, also committed an additional $2 billion to bring as many fiber passings as possible across that 20-state region that, which they were acquiring. In March of 2022, Apollo Global Management announced that the state of North Carolina would be home to the corporate headquarters. It's in Charlotte, North Carolina. And that the assets would, that were part of this transaction would actually be branded as Brightspeed, branded and marketed as Brightspeed. On October 3rd of 2022, Brightspeed actually got the keys to the car, if you will. The transaction between Lumen and Apollo Global Management closed on October 3rd of 2022. And at that point forward, the assets were owned by a completely different company, completely different executive leadership team, and ultimately owned by Apollo Global Management, but again marketed as Brightspeed. Since that time, to give you an indication of the changes, as of the end of April, Brightspeed has announced that in the state of North Carolina, it intends to build 800,000 fiber passings in totality across the 20 states that it acquired. The goal is 3 million. So you can see, North Carolina is really getting the lion's share of the funding to build as many fiber passings as possible. And that's using that $2 billion that I mentioned earlier, that Apollo Global Management had committed to the process. Anything that we're able to achieve by way of broadband grants will only serve to grow that number. I'm very hopeful that we get close to 900,000 to a million locations in the state of North Carolina with fiber. And again, this is going to be symmetrical fiber. Initially, we will start out offering speeds of 1 gigabyte by 1 gigabyte, meaning the same speed coming into your home is going out of your home. And then ultimately, we think we'll get to 2 gig fairly quickly. And ultimately, we're told by our vendor, who is Corning, based here in North Carolina, that, that the fiber will be scalable to 10 gig. So we're really building a future-proof network with this. But at any rate, and we immediately hired 200 additional call center agents as, when, when Brightspeed got the keys to the car, I like to say. And then in the state of North Carolina, we've also hired 51 additional technicians. Not all of them are up and running yet. Some are still going through training, but as a result of that, we've seen a dramatic improvement in our service metrics. And you'll see on this slide that it notes that we're answering calls now on average in less than one minute. So since we have hired the additional service technicians, our meantime, the repair numbers in North Carolina have improved 32%. And the meantime to install has improved by 20%. And again, we expect that number to continue to improve as we bring more of the technicians that are going through training online. So again, Brightspeed is looking to install as much fiber as possible across, across our service area. And some of the, the real advantages of fiber is, quite frankly, fiber's not stolen. We've had a large number of copper theft incidents over the past seven to eight months since, since the close of the transaction. And obviously, when fiber, excuse me, when copper is ripped out of the ground, it, it takes that section of the network down. So we've experienced a, a lot of impact there. Fiber is less impacted by weather. Some of the, the older, more traditional copper network, if it gets wet, they're certainly going to see some service degradations associated with that. And you just simply don't have that with fiber. But most importantly here, the process that we are going through with this deployment is, it's a, it's a fairly new process here in North America in how the service is deployed. It's more of a plug and play, if you will, than as much fiber splicing that has traditionally been done. Certainly, there's, there will be some fiber splicing involved, and fiber splicing is very time-consuming and tedious. But there's more of a plug and play feature associated with this, particularly as you get involved in the last mile of the fiber deployment. Good news about that, it enables us to deploy the network quicker than we would have otherwise been able to do so. And then if the network were, if those assets were to become damaged, it enables us to replace them far quicker than we would have been able to do in the past. And to give you some idea of the simplicity of it, I've actually done it. And I'm the governmental affairs guy, so that, that goes a long way to show you how much simpler things have gotten with the improved technology. And on the horizon, we do have a couple of different broadband grant opportunities, and we'd be delighted to work with the county on that. The, the one coming up is CAB, Completing Access to Broadband. And in that particular process, the county will have a much higher level involvement in determining the areas that the county wants to have served associated with that grant program. And the great grant, each application was capped at being able to leverage $4 million of state funding. With the CAB program, that's going to jump to $8 million. In the great grant, the speed threshold is 25 and 3. So if, if a location had services providing 25 meg by 3 meg, it was deemed ineligible. That has now jumped and will be for all future grant rounds, including CAB, to 100 by 20. So you will have some, some areas that were eligible, that were ineligible, excuse me, you will have some areas that were ineligible and the great grant that now are likely eligible associated with the jump in the speed threshold. And then finally, in the, towards the end of June, we will learn the state of North Carolina's allocation from the federal government as part of the BEED program. That's the next round of federal funding. It's a $42.5 billion federal budget. North Carolina, in all likelihood, will receive somewhere around $1 billion associated with that. And presumably, those funds will flow through our two grant programs here in the state of North Carolina, which is the great grant process and the CAB program. But again, CAB is what's on the horizon, and that will likely be announced by the state here in the next, I'm guessing with, excuse me, within the next 60 days. So this map that I'm showing you here today, the, the yellow locations on the map are the locations that were awarded as part of the great grant process. It's just, just less than 4,800 locations. The green dots are locations that we will also be serving a great number of those associated with the build planned for the yellow dots. So the, the awarded locations, obviously, you know, we have to build out to them in any location that we pass that is, that is along that fiber route, it is our intent to serve them. Now, as I mentioned earlier, Brightspeed had indicated, or excuse me, Apollo Global Management had provided $2 billion to provide as many fiber passings as possible. So the planned build in Harnett County associated with that private investment, if grant programs did not exist at all, they still would intend to build approximately 20,000 fiber passings in Harnett County. And many of those green dots would ultimately be part of those builds. I will tell you, we have the Dunn build on the calendar for this year, and it's a little over 9,000 passings in and around the Dunn area that we expect to be completed this year. But again, now that, once all the contracts are executed with all of the parties in order to build out the, the grant awards, so again, the yellow dots that we're referring to on this map, once those, once the contracts are all executed, that starts a two-year shot clock in order to complete the build. That does not mean that all of these locations will be turned up at year two. We will turn them up in phases as we build out. Some of them will be turned up in advance, well in advance of that. But the program does allow for a two-year build plan. So that's it in a nutshell for what I have for you today, and happy to take any questions.
You good, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's basically the update for this morning. We're going to move forward as is with Brightspeed. And we are looking at heavily at the CAB grant, waiting for the state broadband office to give us more information to move forward with that. We've allocated our funds for that to, up to $2 million is what we put into the plan at this point for the CAB fund. And like you said, there's, there's going to be a look to Harnett County to give more direction and of course, more funding towards that particular great grant, or not great grant, the CAB grant. Any other questions?
When would this start? When would all of this start?
Yeah, once.
Do you have any firm dates on your side?
Well, again, once the contracts are executed, that starts a two-year shot clock. And we have already begun the process of building out Dunn area. And again, that is part of our private investment, that is not part of the grant program. However, we're very fortunate that we're building there because it enables us to leverage those assets and push further out into the network and I think would likely speed up the build associated with those. So, I mean, we're on the cusp of it beginning right away. Obviously, the, the situation with, with the state and Cloudwise, that may impact our timeline depending upon what action goes forward there. But I will tell you, we're very delighted to, to be a part of the Harnett County grant program and look forward to working with you guys in the future. Again, we are committed to building approximately 20,000 fiber passings using our own investment dollars, which we think will enable us to leverage those assets and push further and further out into the county as efficiently and economically as possible.
One more question. I couldn't read on the map. Does this include the Irwin area? Since you're talking about Dunn, does this include the Irwin area? But Brightspeed is already in Lillington area.
Well, when you say we're already in, Brightspeed owns assets in the Lillington area. But they're not fiber passings, or they're not fiber to the home or fiber to the prim passings, and that's what we will be building out associated with that. So again, the yellow dots are the ones that were awarded as part of the broadband grant program. As we build to the yellow dots, any homes that we pass along the fiber route, it is also our intent to serve those as well. So in reality, the 4,773 locations, we expect that number to grow quite a bit. I won't know the exact number of that until our engineering team gets out and what they, they characterize as walking the route. So, but once that work is, is done, I should be able to come back and visit with you guys in a few, in a few months and give you a bit more detail as to, as to the number of passings that we think we can actually achieve above and beyond what's been awarded through the grant program. And then I'll have additional details regarding the, the planned build that we're going to be doing using our own investment dollars.
Thank you.
Any else?
I think that'll do. Thanks for the update. All right, move on to item number four. Discuss a request to approve a fireworks permit for Anderson Creek, PRA, Mr. Larry Smith.
Good morning. The first one I've got up is for Anderson Creek's homeowners association. They're going to do their shoot July 1st at 9:30 PM. East Coast Fire Techniques is going to be doing that shoot. Their permit request meets all the requirements, all the safety guidelines and all that. They're ready to go. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Any issues with that consent agenda for next week? I will go ahead and add that to the consent agenda next week. And you're up for another permit for Town of Lillington?
Same thing for the Town of Lillington, same company's going to be doing that. That'll be on July 4th. And again, this application request meets all the requirements.
Any questions? Comments? Consensus of the board to add this consent agenda for next week? Go ahead and add this consent agenda for next week as well, Madam Clerk, thank you. Right, and you're up again to discuss Viper radio.
What I've done is I've reached out, as the board approved a project for municipal law enforcement to replace their Viper radios. I've reached out to Motorola. We've got a hard quote now of $1.6 million for that project. They've got a letter of intent that we used for the last project also, that they'd like us to sign. What that will do is that will secure that current quote, because they're, again, they're expecting price increases come 1 July. It'll be billed as we receive equipment or services. It won't be a, you know, pay upfront type of, of deal. This is just going to secure those resources for us, and they can also go ahead and start ordering those resources. This worked very well for the last project because, again, the supply chain, we're just beginning to wrap up the county project.
Anybody have any questions or comments? The consensus of the board to add this letter of intent to the consent agenda for next week as well? Go ahead and add that as well, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Item number seven, Discuss a request to approve Bi-Tech software, Ms. Christine Wallace. Morning.
Good morning. How are y'all? This morning, I am requesting final approval for the contract for Bi-Tech software. The tax department is in the final phase of completing this conversion for our listing and collections data. And with this conversion, all divisions of the tax department will be on the same software, including appraisal, listing, and collections. And so this conversion was approved as part of the CIP for 2023. The initial cost to convert was $273,203, and the final contracted cost is $262,255. So with this conversion, will, this will allow us to improve our data entry, finance, and year-end reporting, and it will also include a mobile assessment, which will help with some taxpayer services.
Any questions or comments? Pleasure of the board to add this consent agenda for approval next week as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead and add this next week as well. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Discuss a request to approve the Tri-Tech software systems. Major McNeil.
This is actually, covers five different departments. It's for the sheriff's office, the record management system, the jail record management system, communications, CAD software, or the automated dispatch system. So its total of all of them is $250,912. But like I said, it actually is five different departments that contributes to that money, but the total goes to $250,000.
Any questions? Major McNeil. Pleasure of the board to add this consent agenda for next week as well. Good luck. Go ahead and add this next week as well.
Thank you.
Surprised we don't have a Quadtech up next. Okay, so Discuss a request to approve contract extensions for chemical supply. Mr. Stewart.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Every year, HRW bids out its chemicals for water and wastewater treatment, naturally to try to get the best prices we can. This year, we had, it was about 13 different suppliers. We had six chemical companies that kept the price the same, so we negotiated with them to do so. That's usually a good thing, the way prices have been going up, like everything else. We had six price, six companies went up in price, so we quickly secured those contracts simply because chemical prices are about like oil prices. They fluctuate all the time. Most of these have gone up since that point. So even the ones that went up, we, we feel good about negotiating those contracts and getting them ready for you to award at the next meeting. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? This is an easy day so far. It's a pleasure of the board to add this to the, to the consent agenda for next week as well. Go ahead and add this next week as well.
I would like to take this opportunity to remind the board, I know next Monday's going to be a busy meeting, but we have that public hearing on the system development fees, and we'll vote on that after the public hearing. So there were no comments received about that, and we'll talk about it more on Monday, but just wanted to remind the board.
Thank you for that, sir.
Thank you.
Discuss a request to approve a contract for planning consulting services with Stewart Inc. Mark Locklear, how you doing, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Development Services requesting, as we're going through the contract process for the, the land use plan update, I think the board is very aware of the, the plan and what it entails. As we go through the process, I think due to price, I think it has to come back to this board for approval, or for final approval, then we'll get this contract signed by everybody, and then we'll be going to work. I know Chris's office has reviewed the contract, and they are good with it, as well as the attorneys for the other side, for Stewart, who we are negotiating the contract, we had to do the work. I'm available for any questions I can get into. I did want to mention that I think Coley and Jay presented to this board in more detail about our selection of Stewart and things like that. We've recently worked with them to tighten up the scope, to make sure that the areas, the, the new areas like the jet port and workforce, affordable housing components is what we're looking for as far as what we're getting from this board, from the manager's office, and from our office as well. So just want to know that that scope has, has been changed slightly, but it's for the good to be more in line with what we're, what we're looking for as a county, so.
This will include an overlay for the airport, right?
Right, right. That's, and that's what we wanted to make sure was clear, is, is making sure that they understood that that's what we were looking for when it came to the jet port, putting those regulations in place, so we could just take those regulations and move them right to the text amendment process, to add them to the UDO, to, to create a, basically an overlay for the jet port. Yes. Also, this includes two small area plans that we'll determine. We have some ideas, but once we get into the process, we'll just, this will include, which hasn't been done in the past, but which is a good thing, so we'll be able to look at specific areas and really drill down on those areas as far as the, the plan goes. And, and, and I think Coley, I'm sure Jay had mentioned this as well, we're, we're teaming up with Stewart and kind of our second place contractor, who brought a lot to the table, and so we asked him if they wouldn't mind working together, and they said yes. So LS3P, which we believe will bring a different aspect to the plan, just, that's different than just Stewart. So, so, so we're excited about working with both of the consultants on this, on this project. Yes, ma'am.
Does, does this include discussion on affordable housing?
Yes, ma'am. Those, those are two of the new, the new components that were, two of, there's a few new components, but the jet port and affordable slash workforce housing is going to be a component of the plan, which is a new component, and we're, we're excited about that as well, because we know that that's been a bit, a bit heavy topic lately.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I appreciate you taking the board's recommendations into consideration, implementing that. So, does anybody have any issues with adding the contract approval for Stewart consulting next week's agenda?
I think it's consent agenda.
Next week's consent agenda. Good? Go ahead and add that as well, Madam Clerk, thank you. Discuss a request to apply USDA NRCS Regional Conservation Program funds. Ms. Lynn Lambert.
Good morning, Commissioners. In an effort to expand our farmland preservation program, Soil and Water is requesting to apply for the Regional Conservation Partnership Program funding from USDA's Natural Resources Conservation Service. This is a unique opportunity intended to conserve agricultural and forestry working lands within the upper Cape Fear River basin in which Harnett is included. This effort will ensure protection of not only working lands for food and fiber production into the future, but will also ensure a buffer for water quality protection along the Cape Fear River. The intended property for this project is a total of 336 acres that lies on the Cape Fear River, and also is the property where Hector's Creek and the enters into the Cape Fear, allowing this project to have an increased impact on water quality protection. Grant funds for this project would go for the purchase of development rights and would be paid to the landowner upon closing of the project. It would be a perpetual conservation easement that the county would hold, and soil and water conservation would be responsible for annual monitoring, reporting, and relationship with the landowner into the future. The match funds that are required by the grant, we have submitted to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture for those match funds, as well as there is a sizable landowner donation towards the conservation easement that will also serve as match funds. So there should not be a need for a So there should not be a need for a cash match from the county. However, we will need support from the legal team during the application process, and of course, the closing process, because it is a real estate transaction.
Questions?
You mentioned a donation of land, I believe?
It is not a land donation, it is an in-kind donation on the landowner's part towards the value of the conservation easement itself. So he is actually giving up a sizable amount of money and donating that as an in-kind donation towards the project.
Thank you.
There's no objection to adding this to the consent agenda next week?
Then what? Good job.
Consent agenda as well next week. Thank you very much, ma'am. Discuss a request to update the clinical patient fee policy, Mr. John Rouse.
Good morning. We're in the process of going through our accreditation, getting ready for our site visit in the fall. One of the things we have to do is review all of our policies and procedures. We sent this policy to the board back in March, and y'all approved what we had. We've had a couple of site visits in the state since then, and they've had a couple of updates and wanted to include them in our clinical fee policy. Basically, what they wanted us to do is to go in and just spell out how we did the fee reviews when we have it. We have a committee at the Health Department that reviews our fees, and then we send them to the Board of Health, and then we bring them to the county for approval. They wanted that actually spelled out in the policy, so that's what that is.
Any issues on this consent agenda for next week? Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda for next week as well. Thank you very much, sir. Discuss the appointment of two commissioners to the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership Board.
Thank you, Chair. The Economic Development Partnership for Harnett County has two appointments to its board that are commissioners. Currently, Commissioner Weatherspoon and Commissioner Matthews are the appointments. This is considered an annual appointment, and so would like to place this on the agenda for basically a nominating process to make a decision as regards to appointments for the coming year to that board.
Mr. Chairman, nominate Commissioner Weatherspoon and Commissioner Matthews to reappoint.
I've actually had both of these individuals reach out to me, and they have expressed interest in serving again. I have no issues with those recommendations as well. Is there anybody else that would like to be nominated for these positions? Do I take it to a vote, or do I put it on the?
It'll be on the agenda for next week.
As a separate line item?
We'll include those, the nominations, and then put it as a separate item.
All right, so you would add this as a separate line item next week for discussion and approval, please, Madam Clerk? Discuss the FY 23-24 recommended budget, and sir.
Thank you, Chair. Well, over the last couple of weeks, Lisa McFadden and I have been working with different commissioners regarding recommendations that they would like to see as additions to the budget. So I'm gonna refer to the sheet that has the green highlight and then the other short little spreadsheet that shows some positions. So as you look at the top of the one that has the green highlight on it, you'll see a number of items that were changed as it relates to the budget. And these items in the white shaded area, the white unshaded area, are items that relate to changes that needed to be made based on new numbers related to different contracts, different positions. It shows those in the continuation budget, and then also those in the expansion. Most of those are small, as you can see, all of them are less than 10,000, but changes nonetheless that need to be made in the budget. When you get to the green shaded area, the first one shown is salaries and benefits for building inspections. The recommendation or request that was made to us was the creation of another code enforcement officer. This is a position that goes out into the field, does checks on different buildings to ensure that they're in compliance with the code, building as they said they would, and this allows us to be able to handle the influx that we've had as we continue to grow. The other position change was that the code enforcement to plan reviewer position that was already included in the initial budget was only for half a year. We're looking at doing is going ahead and moving forward with the hiring of that position in July in order to help with the additional work that's been impacted in the building inspections area. So those are the changes, adding a position and taking one that was only gonna go for half a year to a full year. And that results in an increase to the budget of $148,544. The next item that relates to is election specialists. Had a request recommendation that we add another election specialist to our elections department. That $56,881 covers that position, both its salary and expenses. The next item is salary and benefits administration legal. That relates to, let's see, that is actually in the, yeah, that's in the DSS S position. What that would do is provide DSS with another attorney and also a paralegal. They currently contract, and you'll see in red on the green highlighted area, $40,000 for legal and also in contingency, $40,000. What this will do is provides the opportunity to have an in-house attorney, so instead of contracting out for that service, if we need to, we'll be able to have that service in-house. Currently, we typically go over and have to utilize a contracted firm in order to provide this by the end of the year. We have so many cases in DSS as it relates to the children and other legal issues that they work on that we're typically hiring someone by mid-year. We're needing to do that in order to keep up with the caseload that we have. Also in DSS, we're looking at adding some other positions. Additional part-time maintenance income caseworker that will work in the energy division, an income maintenance worker, two of those, one starting in September and one starting in January, and that is $89,654. We also would look to hire another social worker, three, which is $75,984, and that's in the foster care department division. Also hiring an income maintenance worker, one, in DS Family and Children's Medicaid, which is $54,000. I already mentioned the attorneys. So those are additional positions that would be added to DSS to help with the additional caseload that they've been experiencing. If you look below the large green highlighted area, you see that there also is a reimbursement in funds for those DSS employees, as we receive money back from the state for at least 50% of the cost of those positions. The next area in the sheriff's office detention center, we're looking at adding a clinical social worker. This will help with the work that's being done with opioid addiction issues. This position is going to be paid for out of our opioid settlement dollars. Not an impact of the general fund, but it is a new position that we believe is needed at this time to start addressing those issues that they are experiencing and to implement some programs that will be coming in the future. And the other change as it relates to the sheriff's office is looking at adding three deputies and one detective, and that is for the sheriff's office street crime unit. This is something that is designed to help with additional crime that's been occurring within the county to help us address those issues, and I feel like we can get a better handle on that. They need the additional manpower. The other change that's mentioned at the bottom of the large green area is an increase in the bonus that school resource officers receive. Request was originally for $5,000, staff set it at $1,200. After discussion with some commissioners, they're recommending that we keep it at the $5,000. That affects, I believe, 23 individuals that are school resource officers, when you take the ones that are at the county and the town level. I think that one is right, it's 23?
23 with county and five with county.
Okay, so 23 for the county and five for the towns that would be impacted by this, and hope this will give some additional assistance to the sheriff as he recruits to hire school resource officers in that area. Other changes that you see within the budget, there are a couple of changes in the revenue side, but it increases the amount of unappropriated fund, of appropriated fund balance used by $1,138,000 to make all of these changes. This puts this number quite a bit higher than what we've experienced in the past as it relates to the budget. I will say, I think there's a good chance that as all things shake out by the end of the year of the budget, we may actually need to use a portion of the unappropriated fund balance in order to accomplish all of these priorities, the money. Even with some changes that Kimberly has made as far as moving some money to help with capital projects, we still have a little bit of space when it comes to the appropriated fund balance, and I think that we'll be able to cover these issues. But, you know, as we've gone through this year, our figure that we used last time was 4.3 million of appropriated fund balance, and I think we're gonna actually end up pretty close to probably not using any of that appropriate fund balance. We've had a higher-than-expected interest. We've had a high interest received from our funds that are currently in the bank as revenue, and then we've also seen a pretty good increase as it comes to sales tax and our collection rates that we've been looking at for our property tax have been good, better than the previous year. And so I think we've done better than expected, and I think we'll finish this year in pretty good shape. But I would suspect that this is a bit of a stretch as we go into next year, but doable. Time will tell as we get towards the end. I'm not concerned about the number, and doing these positions, I think as I look at the growth that I've seen with additional homes and so forth, our revenues will continue to climb when it comes to property tax, and we should be okay. But this, with the 12 positions that we've already included in the budget, there's another 14, one of them being part-time. This is an additional 26 positions plus, I didn't mention, is we also have in contingency six positions for the Medicaid expansion, which is likely going to occur. And so we're adding a significant number of positions. But what I would say is, is we are a growing county, and that's what we can expect. We're a growing county, and as we grow, we need to increase the number of staff that we have in order to be able to provide, continue to provide good service. And I think that these numbers in these positions will provide better service in each of these departmental areas.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question, when you talk about Medicaid expansion. How, have y'all analyzed how that's gonna affect the county in any way now?
Yes, yes. Paul Plinsky and his staff have done a good work of analyzing what the requirements are going to be for them, average the number of additional caseloads they expect. And so they've determined that the number of additional staff they need to support the Medicaid expansion in Harnett County is six. And so we've allowed that in our contingency budget. As they move forward, they'll begin to do the hiring process for those additional six positions and bringing them on as they move forward. The state's going to provide us some funding, but it's not going to cover the entire cost. We will have our own costs as it relates to that, and that's why we've allocated the money in the contingency in order to cover that.
We okay, Kim?
Yes, ma'am. I was just gonna add, conversations with the county manager and Lisa and myself, we've gone back and looked, just to be able to bring you the data to kind of give you some assurances. But when you look at the fund balance that was originally appropriated last year for the original budget, yes, that number that the manager is suggesting that we appropriate this year, yes, it is higher, but also what is higher is the total operating budget of the county. So when you go back and kind of analyze that data and try to understand it, we actually appropriated 3.11% fund balance in the original budget last year. This budget that the manager and Lisa have worked on only appropriates 3.29%. So when you look at the whole, it does look like a large number, but percentage-wise, when you're comparing, everything is going up. But that also speaks to the revenues that the manager has talked about, the revenue that's coming in, the services that our citizens are needing, and moving the county forward as the plans and policies that you have adopted or have been put into place. So I think that's, Lisa and I were talking about it on Thursday afternoon, and so when we went back and kind of looked at it, yes, it is a shocking number, but it's the price, and it's the cost, and it's the vision of the county growing and becoming what we know it needs to be.
Well, I just want to ask one more question.
Go ahead.
But I see every day growth here, and population growth, that's basically all that's growing here. Would that population growth, you know, continue to expand over the next couple of years? Or the tax, in the tax?
Well, more people are coming in as you are working on policies to bring more industry in, to bring more jobs in. That coupled with other activities to get the salaries of our residents up, you know, our median household income, that's also gonna, they will hopefully will buy here, stay here, you know, homes are going up. You know, it's gonna be a whole lot, and to answer your question, I mean, how do I say this? People will just keep having babies, and you know, that is the world. I mean, you know, the generations go on, because, you know, people die every day, children are born every day. It's just the cycle of life. But, you know, like I said, you know, with all the growth coming in, that brings with it a lot of, you know, different citizens from other areas, you know, and as we see, we're trying to hold on to the farm life and the local community. But there's also other groups coming in, so, you know, how do we blend all of that? But yes, the county will continue to grow, but I do believe that there is a point to where, you know, we will reach that magic number. But that doesn't mean that, you know, everything stops and we can just coast on laurels. You know, people will continue to need things, and as life goes on, as the world goes on, as the economy goes on, you know, we will continue to try to anticipate the need to make life better. But, you know, we never saw the pandemic coming, but, you know, we've learned a lot from that to look ahead. And so that is where, over the last several years, you know, the boards have tried to look ahead and get prepared. So we're in a much better position to meet, hopefully, anything that comes our way. I hope those are not famous last words, but, you know, you do the best you can, you make a plan, and you move forward.
I'm just glad to see that we are trying to stay on top of it. Because for the years, we just sit, do stagnant. And we can no longer take that position now, with what we have coming into this county. In order to create jobs, you know, and we gotta look at the fact that we're gonna try to create jobs and the population growth that we continue to have. It does cause, that's what we call, growth with problems if we don't stay on top of it. It'll create a lot of problems.
It's quality and life, you know.
Thank you, and thank you, Brett, for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Consent agenda. Item that we can?
It should, Ashley probably should be a separate item rather than a consent agenda item, even though there's consensus here. It is a large decision and really should be voted on individually, in my opinion.
Any issues with putting this on as a separate line item for next week's agenda? We'll go ahead and add this as a separate line item for next week? Is that all that you have on that, sir?
Sir, on the board, Ashley, if you have any questions on anything, this attachment that I gave you is what will be modified as it relates to the ordinance and the changes Lisa will work through preparing the ordinance for your approval as a separate item at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on now to item number 15, review applications to serve on boards and committees. Commissioners, you have your packet in front of you. Looks like we only have one application, and there is also a resignation. So Cemetery Board of Trustees, Mr. Chris Hawke would like to be considered for appointment. His application is attached, and he is a District Four constituent. Commissioner Weatherspoon, have you spoken with this individual?
Chris Hawke? Now, I know Chris, I think I don't have a problem with adding him. I think I don't have a problem with adding him. He works in our GIS department.
Oh, okay. All right, that Chris then. Any objections to adding this for approval next week to the consent agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and add him. And then there's also a resignation from... This Mr. Roger Brown? Yes, for the Home Community Block Grant Committee, Mr. Roger Brown is asking to resign. He's the older consumer on the committee. Is there anybody that has an objection with his resignation? Nope. We'll go ahead and add his resignation to next week's agenda as well. Moving on, county manager's report, Mr. Trout.
The only thing I'll add is, as we look at the positions, I have put the advertisement out as it relates to hiring our next Economic Development Director. Within a couple of weeks, I'll put out the advertisement related to our Airport Director position, Jetport Director position that is open. And, but in the meantime, I have full faith in both of those that I've pointed as interim directors. I think they can handle the job for the interim timeframe, and we'll go through the hiring process here in the near future.
That's it? Sir, do we have a need for closed session today?
We do.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes, to discuss certain personnel matters and to consult with the county's legal staff in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege concerning the handling of certain litigation, including the following case, Frank McDonald Jr. versus Lieutenant Michelle Pittman, U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of North Carolina, file number This motion's pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, six and three.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
During closed session.
Open session, we are now back in session.
I move to adjourn Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, we are adjourned.